Always on it, now it's not. Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, July eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Please rise for a moment of silence. Love the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allinson?
Here.
Carmody?
Here.
Fishbein?
Here.
Laughin?
Here.
Morone?
Here.
Tata?
Here.
Testa?
Here.
Zandri?
Here.
Sivoni?
Here.
All present. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept consent agenda items A through C.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, that portion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the appropriations of ARPA funds for items D and E.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved, seconded by Counselor Allinson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Abstention, please.
Not noting the abstention, thank you. And the minutes?
There was a correction I wasn't good with, so.
Okay. We'll re-present the minutes at the next meeting. Item four, there are no items removed from the consent agenda. We are on to item five, the public question and answer period. For the benefit of the newcomers, name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, I forgot. Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Through the chair to the mayor or to the controller. You are. Has the town of Wallingford heard back on the community challenge grant from the state?
Yes, we did not. We were not approved.
Okay. Do you know if there's going to be another round?
There are expected to be additional rounds.
Okay. Question to the controller then? Do you know about how much money is left in the ARPA pool?
I don't have that information right now.
Wallpark?
Four or five million?
If the town, I hope the town will, decides to go for the Connecticut Communities Challenge Grant Program, this can be a parallel grant as I stated in February before you passed in the last one. You could do multiple items at once. One thing you can do as ask money for is community pool. You can ask for ten million dollars, half would come from the town, and the other half could come from the state. Under this program, that's one of the uses that can be done. You can also ask for other programs, other things that you want to do. You can still ask for the train station if the mayor decides to ask for the train station again. You can do two of them at once. Not one, each one has to have its own application. Each one should be less than ten million dollars and more than a million. And it has to be matched, however you want to match it. But one of the ways you can match that money is ARPA. That's one of the things that the state is allowing you to do. So I would hope that if they're gonna do it, do it quickly, see what the state does, pause your ARPA, and you can really fund the pool because I think that some of the counselors were surprised that there was no money set aside for the pool after you had already approved it. This is an opportunity to fund the pool, half of it from the state, which would be a good thing to do. This is something that, you know, Traditions just sold recently. And you could have taken some of the ARPA money and bought Traditions with it, and the state could have paid for the other half of it. So Traditions was a little over three million dollars to buy the golf course, could have been one and a half, 1.8 million each, and they could have done it. But you have to be proactive on these, and I just don't think the town has been proactive on any of these. They really should look to see what they want to do on this last community. If this grant program's still going, the mayor says it possibly is. I didn't know how much they awarded in this last round because it has a finite number of money. I think it was a hundred million dollars. Lot of towns, smaller and bigger than Wallingford, have some real innovative things that they're doing, and they're getting millions and millions of dollars matched by the state of Connecticut. And I would hope that Wallingford would do something because we did nothing with ARPA to benefit the town. We should do something that we can to match some of this money. Thank you.
Mike Liddon, Palmeroy Avenue. Just briefly on what Mr. Gross said about the community grant challenge. The state of Connecticut, if someone from the town attended the webinar, said this round is the last round. There is no more community grant challenge. That was at the training, I attended in my professional capacity at the training, but that's not why I was coming up to the mic. Through the chair to the mayor, I'd like to ask an update on something. On January tenth, twenty twenty-three, the mayor stated that Wooden Kaplan's parking lot would be paved this spring. There were signs up. They said no parking, that the lot was going to be closed. You had paving contractors on South Main Street and South Whittlesee using Wooden Kaplan as a laydown area, so we had contractors right there, and yet, here we are. I think now this is the third time we've said it's going to be paved, whether it was for 350th, 350th plus two, or now this most recent spring, it still has not been completed. When is it going to get paved?
The previous delay was caused by lack of the materials for installing the lighting. I believe that has been completed. We're expecting that paving will be in the very near future.
So what, spring of twenty twenty-four or before the end of the construction season or for celebrate?
Very new future would be in the next couple of weeks.
I mean, the only concern is that you had a contractor there, they were using it as a laydown area, you're going to pay a contractor to mobilize again to go back out there. It's a common theme that we see in this town with poor planning. You know, we're paying for things double. It's just like the Brothers Parking Lot, for example, where the building was demolished, and yet, when the contractors went out to pave it, they were moving portions of the foundation that was supposed to be removed. I saw it on my commute into work one morning going, I thought that building was removed, and yet, they were still taking remnants of the old foundation out of the site. So I mean, it would be nice to start breaking this kind of mentality where we double pay for things, we don't plan, we don't care, and just move forward. The other thing would be is like, when is the Brothers Parking Lot going to be striped? I mean, it's been paved now for how long and has not been striped? Is that ever going to be striped? Or is that on the same schedule with the Wooden Kaplan Parking Lot, so we'll wait and see? I mean, as a taxpayer, it's extremely frustrating to see this, and I hope the nine of you see this because otherwise, I ask you, do you even live in town? Are you driving around and seeing this? Because it's constant. So, thank you.
Jesse Reynolds, Old Durham Road. I was wondering if we ever heard anything in regards to not passing the ordinance with respect to the Fair Rent Commission? Have we heard anything back from the state yet, or were there any repercussions of any kind?
I'm not aware.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. All right, seeing no more takers, I will close the public question and answer period, move on to item six.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the bid waiver in the amount of one million forty-two-thousand eight-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars from Motorola Solutions to provide a radio communication equipment installation services for the new radio tower at one hundred Barnes Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, William Wright, Police Station Steering Committee.
Job Entera Police Chief.
Our purpose to come before you tonight is to seek your consideration for a bid waiver for Motorola Solutions for the new police station equipment and the installation of the antenna gear that needs to go on the tower. A number of pieces of equipment that are at the current station need to move to one hundred Barnes. There also needs to be some programming of the new antenna arrays that'll be on the new tower. Motorola will do that work for us. I think going back a little bit, if I can remind you, we were really, really hopeful that we were not going to need a tower. We were really hopeful that there could be an antenna array on the roof of the new police department, that we wouldn't need a tower. We're in close proximity to another tower site that's near one hundred Barnes. That bore itself out not to be true. We need to have microwave pinpoint from one hundred Barnes to the prime side of the town's radio system, which is on the west side of town. That required a study by Motorola to confirm that, just to make sure that what we were being told by Motorola was accurate. We commissioned our own contractor, our own vendor, to do the same work. His result was the same as what we heard and received from Motorola. This was several months ago, so from that time until we're before you this evening, we have worked extensively with Motorola. They are the town's vendor and provider for the town's townwide radio system, which, if you're not familiar, police department, the fire department, public utilities, public works, and all of the schools are on the townwide radio system. That's all managed by a vendor on behalf of Motorola. Our contract is with Motorola, it's not with a vendor, and we're seeking your approval to confirm a bid waiver so that we can enter into a contract with Motorola to both move the equipment that needs to be moved from one thirty-five North Main, install the new equipment that needs to be installed essentially in the dispatch center, the new dispatch center, and also the tower vendor, which is not Motorola, is responsible for hanging the antennas on the tower. We're looking as part of this bid waiver, once the cable comes into the building, for that site to be networked onto the current radio system.
Thank you. So, you know, the threshold issue for the council is why aren't we going out to a competitive bid? And you have told us that Motorola provides all the radio services for town for the two public safety departments and the Board of Education. But just, you know, the question that needs to be answered is, why can't we go out to bid and see if another contractor can put its equipment on that tower instead of Motorola's?
So we're under, I shouldn't say we, the town is under contract with Motorola through twenty twenty-seven for maintenance of this radio system. We're very concerned about a different vendor coming in and providing this work for us so that should there be a problem downstream when the project completes, we don't want to get into certainly a back and forth between Motorola, which is already under contract by the town, and whomever this other company might be as to who's responsible for the failure in the network, which, right now, through a lot of hard work that went on five years ago now, the town recognizes that it has one hundred percent coverage all the time in every part of town. A lot of work went into that, and we don't want to have the possibility of that coverage being interrupted, and then there's finger pointing when our most valuable resources being police, fire, and the Board of Ed certainly are in need of the system.
Questions from the council? Counselor Testa?
Thank you. Good evening, chiefs.
Good evening. First question I have is, I notice in your memo, actually, in Ms. Kapachinsky's memo, it says that we were hopeful a tower would not be needed. However, we were informed by Motorola that the microwave radio system would require a one hundred foot tower at one hundred Barnes. It's not providing radio coverage, but it'll be linking Barnes into the townwide system. My question would be, and I think this has come up in discussions I've had with people, why were we not informed by Motorola when you were putting together all the bid specs originally for the facility? Or were we not with them then?
No, we were. But to your question, we were really, really hopeful that, because we were really within almost eyesight of a different tower in town, that we would be able to beam microwave technology to that tower and then back across town to the prime site, which is on the west side. That was our real hope. In knowing how much this was going to cost as part of the project, we were really concentrating on that. So when we came before you for the original, that's not true. When we came before you for the increase in the bond amendment, the bond amount. So if you recall, you bonded a certain amount of money for the town to, one, purchase one hundred Barnes, and then, two, enter into a design study. Once that was done, we came back before you eighteen months ago or so, looking to increase that amount. At that point, we were not yet convinced that we needed a tower. So we did not include this amount of money, although it was unknown at the time. We didn't include any amount of money in that second request from you when you approved that large amount of money for the project for the radio tower because we were not yet convinced and sure that we were going to need one. That's why we didn't include it. And I think Allison Kapachinsky, if I recall correctly, may have mentioned that during her presentation to you along with Chief Entera, that we were probably, and hopefully not, but probably going to have to come back to seek your permission for funding for the tower. And unfortunately, as it goes, here we sit before you tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I remember all of that, and it makes sense. I just, again, this question should be for Motorola. You know, eighteen months ago, why didn't Motorola tell you then? What happened between two years ago, a year ago, and today, that you finally determined that as much as you hoped you wouldn't need this, you ended up needing it because they told you you need it? So that, honestly, and now we're looking to extend, expand the contract with them, and I'm not opposed to this. Pragmatically, realistically, operationally, I understand that the rationale behind this bid waiver. But it's a little frustrating to me because I think when we put this bid out, the large chunk, if a tower was included in that, we could have possibly saved some money. And if they decided at some point to tell you, you know, you need a tower. They could have told you that twelve months ago, eighteen months ago, two years ago. Because I don't see anything that's changed. It's not that you determined and came to the conclusion. They told you, and they're asking you to expand their services, so I'm a little upset about that. So be it. The other question is, how much of this 1.5, well, it's a million dollars for radio communications, so we're talking about additional services. I understand that. Tower construction and contingency of about half a million. Did you, you said a moment ago that they're not in the tower construction business?
No. Well, I don't know if they are or they're not.
Well, they're not providing, they're not providing that. How is that being handled if it's part of this bid waiver? Who's doing the work?
So the bid waiver itself is just for the work, the bid waiver request is just for the work that Motorola is going to do. Move a bunch of gear from one thirty-five North Main, install new gear at one hundred Barnes inside the building, and then pick up the antenna leads, the cable, if you will, as it comes down from the tower into the building, and network all of that onto the system. The tower construction, the design of the tower, the foundation, and the actual tower itself is being handled by Downs Construction, which is the general contractor for the entire project.
All right, so this is an add-on to the existing construction contract?
Yes.
Okay.
That portion, Mr. Testa, has been publicly bid.
Thank you. And that, I'm so happy you said that. And I hope people heard that. That was publicly bid. The construction portion of this, okay. And lastly, I mean, are we leaving any communication equipment at the armory? Listen to me calling it the armory, right? Are we leaving any equipment there?
Yes.
And will it be functional? And what happens if we decide to sell that building?
Go ahead, John.
It's a road we'd have to cross when we get there, but there are some discussion that in what we do with that building that we can carve out something to protect that one room. So everything that we have for communications is contained in one section of the building. It's in the far corner of the building, secured behind a steel door. So there's a nine-one-one room, which handles strictly our nine-one-one calls that come in, which is another project that kind of goes along with it. And then there's a strictly communication room, which handles all the radio communications for the entire town, for all the utilities and for the Board of Ed. So there has to be something left there in order to function, you know, with the tower that's currently there because that's not going to go dead. It's something that's going to continue to work.
Those functions aren't moving over to the new facility eventually?
So the new facility will be the primary communications facility, but the tower, correct me if I'm wrong, the tower still at one thirty-five North Main Street will be working.
So the way that the system is designed, there's an umbrella, if you will, a canopy over the entire town. It actually reaches a little bit further than the entire town. In all of those communication towers, there's four presently, four in Wallingford, one in North Bramford. The one in North Bramford sits on town of Wallingford-owned land. The water department has control of that piece. And all of those towers talk to each other all day long in a beam microwave signal back and forth. So the tower that's at one thirty-five North Main covers a certain portion of the town. Although it acts as the site for the dispatch center presently, it also covers a certain portion of the center of town. Could the tower move from there? Yes, it could essentially come here, but a study would have to be done to relink all of that microwave technology so that it continues to function, excuse me. But you couldn't remove that tower. You'd have a dead spot essentially in the center of town, a certain, you know, concentric circle where it would be dead because we need that coverage.
And that's important to understand. And I can foresee the questions that will arise if and when we choose to do something with that facility that doesn't involve us owning it. And then everybody will be saying, what were you thinking at the time? Why were you? So I'm throwing it out at you now. Silly question, maybe can it be moved next door onto the fires building?
Yeah, with a proper study, it could be. I mean, it could possibly be there. You could possibly put a generator box like we have for other towers that can function if we don't own the building anymore. I mean, there's different options. Obviously, they all cost some sort of money.
All right. Well, I think that answered all of my questions and for now. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, gentlemen, and I appreciate your help.
Mr. Chairman, just to, I'm a little concerned that the bid waiver is perhaps getting a little bit confused with the ordinance amendment in terms of the dollar figures. Ms. Kapachinsky's memo indicates that the value for the bid waiver is a million forty-two-thousand eight-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars. The ordinance is being amended by one million five hundred thousand. Majority of that difference is the bid amount for the tower. So the tower is not part of this bid waiver.
Thank you for the correction or clarification. Counselor Tata?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. A couple of questions. First of all, this was on our agenda two weeks ago, and I believe it was for about five million dollars, and then it was removed and then came back at the one million or the 1.5. Can you explain where the savings came from?
Yeah. So that was my mistake. You'll recall, for those members of the council that were here in twenty eighteen, you granted Chief Heidgaard and I a bid waiver of, well, it was 5.9 million, and then it was a little bit of contingency, but roughly 5.9 million dollars to construct the system that we have now. My intent in that memo was to bring you back to twenty eighteen just to give you some sense, especially for council members that weren't on the council at the time, that we invested as a community a significant amount of money in twenty eighteen into the townwide radio system. But it was never meant to be, and I apologize for the confusion, a request for 5.9 million more dollars. It was for the 1.55 that you have in front of you tonight. The memo was very unclear, which is why we asked that it be pulled from the agenda for consideration tonight with a clearer document that is more easily understood, and I apologize for that.
No, thank you.
My intent was not to ask you for 5.9 more million dollars.
Okay. Thank you for clarification. And then my other question, and this might kind of go into the next agenda item, but what was, and this might be for the controller, what was our original bonding? I know we had the bonding to buy, to purchase the property, and then we had the original bonding. I'm just trying to see, because I know the costs have obviously, you know, gone up exponentially throughout the project. I'm just trying to see where we started. I want to say in the beginning, we were told 20 million for the project. Is that correct?
I don't have that information in front of me. I don't have that information in front of me, I'm sorry.
Can anyone answer that? I thought in the beginning, we were around 20 million, we thought, for the whole project. Is that correct?
I don't know that it was 20, but it wasn't 30. And those were the prices that we were presented with, with an escalation of four percent a year moving forward. We all know what happened post-pandemic with inflation, goods and services. You approved us to purchase, pre-purchase the switch gear for the electrical system for the new building. I can tell you that even that's been backed up again now. And I think that was a contributor to the escalation in costs. I can't tell you exactly why it's so much more. The only thing I can tell you is that we competitively bid the project across a number of different vendors in professions. And it's a lot of money, right? And that's not lost on us. The committee is absolutely hardworking. When you consider the composition of the committee, to have three licensed professional engineers, Rich Heidgaard, who saw the construction of the North Farms Volunteer Firehouse, Chief Entera and his staff, and all of these contractors meeting regularly in either committee as a whole or in different small work groups like this little tower piece, every single solitary dollar is looked at very closely. And I can tell you this, long ago, when I started in government service, I was told that every single solitary thing we do as a government function, every single solitary move we make, every penny we spend is taxpayer money. Whether it's local taxes, whether it's state money that gets passed down to us, whether it's federal grants, that's all tax money, every single penny. And I can tell you that this committee has looked at that every time And I can tell you that this committee has looked at that every time we meet down to the penny very closely. We challenge bid wa, uh, excuse me, change orders. We challenge what we're being told. I think we've shaved a significant amount of money here and there with different components, but it's not cheap. And why it went from, and I remember Counselor Fishbein and I having a conversation at the time that I came before you, um, three or four years ago. And he asked me, could it be 30 million? And I said, I don't think it's going to be 30 million. I remember it clearly as I sat here. And it's much more than that now. And that's not lost on us.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and obviously appreciate the work you're doing. You know, it's just, it's difficult, um, I know, I think you'll probably remember, I was the, I was the one Novo for this for two reasons, the cost and the location were the, were my two issues. I mean, this isn't the only project that I've seen since I've been up here where, you know, we're, we're given a cost estimate and, and you make your decision based on that.
Apparently your mic is not picking you up.
Sorry about that. And, you know, we make a decision based on price we're given, and then, um, once you get into it, you're so far in that it's really too late to...
Yeah, your mic is not picking you up. Now it is.
Maybe I'll start that over. Um, anyway, as I was saying, just in case that wasn't picking me up, um, so, so when I initially voted no for this project, it was because of the cost concerns and the location. And the cost has obviously gone up, the bonding ordinance looks like it's about 35 million, a little under 35 million at this point. So it's, it's just not the first project we've seen up here where we're, you know, we're giving a, giving a cost to start and you make the decision based on that cost, and then as it gets going, the cost is, um, is higher and higher. And, um, I, I, obviously we need the tower, I'm not against that, but the, the cost concerns are, um, are an issue for me still at this point. And I just wanted to, uh, say that, so thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry about the, uh, the microphone issue there.
Counselor Fishbein.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So first I want to say that it's not ashes, it's stitches. Um, kids, wear your helmets and, um, you know, when it's the first period and you're skating really fast and you run into each other and there's blood all over the ice and you can still score two goals after that, it's, it's always great. But, um, anyway, I just had a couple of questions. The, um, when is this thing going to open?
Hopefully soon.
Soon, we just heard soon was two weeks, right? It's not two weeks.
I mean, we're looking, I mean, we have estimates between late summer of 2024 and fall of 2024.
Okay. I know there's, I, you know, I drive by all the time, so I know there's, you know, there's active stuff going on there. Um, you know, it's an important project. Post-pandemic, we just see numbers ballooning, right? And it's something that we planned, I know, when Counselor Savoni and I first got up here, you know, it was, it was the meeting before we got sworn in. We were talking about this. So we, we know that the project is overdue. I think the, the numbers have ballooned because of supply chain things and just the cost of everything right now. So, um, but I have to come back to, we spent a lot of money on a consultant here, somebody who has done a lo, quite a few police stations. Why didn't they identify this?
I can't speak to that. Not, not that I
I know they were
Not that I'm putting you off, I just don't know.
No, I
To honestly answer your
That's a, you know, it's a good, because, you know, when the original site was identified and, you know, you know, this is a good site and, and, you know, geographically, I agree, it's a good site. I, you know, it's near Route 5, right? And most of your stuff is going on on Route 5, I got it. You know, we've got the lottery going in basically right across the street, you know, you've got stuff going on, there's a lot of development in that area. But I would have thought that a consultant that we've spent a lot of money on would have said, hey, you may have a problem with the tower here. So, um, you know, hindsight is 2020, I guess. I'm, I'm in support of what's before us. And, and you did leave it open, you know, in all canter. It isn't like we closed the door last time, you know, this is all we need, we're going to get this thing done, you know, in good faith and in honesty. You said, you know, we still got this issue that's out there. Um, which brings me to another point or question. An antenna like this, I believe, needs planning and zoning approval. So where are you with that?
We've been approved by planning and zoning on May 8th.
Okay.
Couple months ago.
So when we talk about delay also, part of that was renderings, going to planning and zoning, having them do the thing. So it isn't like we did the bonding and then you're coming to us all this time, you had to get interim approvals. And now it's like, we need money, so.
There's a number of things that we had to satisfy, both locally, at the state level, through the FCC, through a bunch of things we have, we've had to satisfy. We're in the midst of a lot of it. Our vendors are responsible for a portion of it, but we're ready to go. We've done the front-end work.
I appreciate that. I, I look forward to this building being opened, so thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If I could add to that, um, one of the elements of delay was getting the second opinion. It was, you know, consulting with an additional consultant to be absolutely certain that we did have to build a tower and we couldn't just rely upon an array that was mounted to the roof of this building.
Yeah, actually, we did everything that we possibly could to not have a tower. I mean, when we, we did a lot of research, my IT manager, you know, is a veteran police officer that retired from West Haven, he's now our IT manager, he has a lot of experience in, in the towers, which he, he was in West Haven for, he went through that project. Um, we looked at the possibility of running fiber, but the continuity of service cannot be guaranteed. So we cannot, you know, try to rely on a fiber run, have a tree go down, and then the service of the town is out. I mean, something that, you know, we can't jeopardize is, is the continuity of service. When you pick up the phone, say that I'm, I need the police or fire department to show up to my house, we can't push the button and it doesn't work, right? So I think that we, we did our due diligence to try to come up with a creative solution to the problem, but ultimately in the end, you know, this is, this is the solution, this is what we need.
You know, a, a further point, um, is with respect to why, you know, the consultant didn't identify the need for the tower. One of the things I'm learning as a member of this committee is the variety of specialized specialties that are involved in a project like this. Um, and the, the people who do radio microwave stuff are really, they're a specialty unto themselves. And, and one of the factors that, uh, you know, that, that I was educated about through this process was the impact of tree growth. Um, and, and having some ability to predict tree growth and its impact on the tower's abilities to communicate with each other. So it, it's, it's quite an in-depth process that leads to where we are, uh, just with this tower. Any other questions from the council? And I will go out to the public. Mr. Glidden?
Mike Glidden, Pomeroy Avenue. Um, quick question. So the location of the tower, is that in the flight path of the heliport?
It is in the flight path of the heliport. We've been given FAA approval, uh, regardless.
Do you have written approval from FAA at this point?
We have approval from the FAA for the heliport behind, uh, the Old Grossman's. And we also have FAA approval for the flight path into Meriden Markham. And there are some components of the approval process, whether it's FAA or the FCC, that are, we are working through right now. I'm just not sure, Mr. Glidden, um, if that satisfies your question.
Yeah, well, the FCC approval process, I know, is a lengthy process. So that's just, I know Counselor Fishbein asked about timing, that's something to consider. It's, it's an agency that operates on their own timeframe. One of my biggest gripes about this, I totally support the police department, I totally support Chief Ventura having the best that he has. However, this is another example of poor fiscal planning. We have a project that never was on the capital improvement plan, was talked about for a long time, and here it is. We bond for one number, we're going out for another number, we're going to go out for another number, because you know there's another change coming. So there's no really comprehensive, long-term fiscal planning that's occurring. Whether it's the administration or the council, someone needs to step up to the plate and actually look out for the taxpayers. Because this is just another example of how our wallets are constantly being robbed, because what's going to happen is the, the bonds are going to come back to us in tax increases. As we keep adding more and more capital projects that are bonded, we are going to have to pay debt services, like, just like your credit card. And like I said, I support the project, it's just poor fiscal planning.
Bill Comer for Broadview Drive. Um, I don't know if you guys remember, I was the one that actually asked about this tower originally. And I was told, as well as you guys, that it didn't need any approval other than the Siding Council, and I, I came back up to the microphone after reaching out to the Siding Council, and they said they, they have no jurisdiction over it whatsoever. Um, it was clearly by the planning and zoning, like I said. The gadfly was right. So fast forward now, and I did everything correct by asking, and I actually went to one of their meetings, which I filmed, and I had asked about the tower at that point. And the way they run the meetings, it's only public comment, they won't give you an answer. You can only make a comment, and they refused to answer the questions. So I asked, what am I supposed to do? Allison says you have to put it in writing, and we'll get back to you. So I did, I put it in writing. I put it in writing, I, I asked Mr. Chief Wright to please respond, I didn't even get a response. I even asked for his email address to confirm that I had the right email address, which it was. I sent it to Allison, I sent it to Chairman Savoni, all members of this committee and this commission, but to this day, never got, received one, one response. Because there's a lot more to it, in my opinion, because I brought this up before, when they, the question about the PCBs, uh, were, were raised, I said, you know what? Somebody ought to actually listen to that whole tape, because there's nobody up there, in my opinion, that knows anything about the tower, and it's going to come back and bite you. Now here we are. All of a sudden, now we, we're finding out about the FAA and the FCC and the NFL and the CIA and the FBI. How many more things don't we know? Where, where do I get the list of all the other entities that have to sign off on it? And you want to talk about a consultant or Motorola? Why weren't, why weren't we made aware of this at, at the infancy stages? Why are we finding out now that the horse left the barn? And as, and as far as this, this train wreck of, of a building, and I agree, the chief needs this, we've known we needed it for 30 years. And, and it behooves me, as I stated before, we knew that, that building was going to be vacated at some point, and I said this before, and I'm saying it again, they could easily put that tower up at the fire department or put it here, so we're going to have to pay for that to happen once again, too. The other thing that, I, I don't know if, if this is part of this package, it's going to cost two, they, they put this in their own minutes, it's $221,000 just to ground that tower. Is this part of this 100, or excuse me, the 1.5 million?
The grounding package is under consideration.
Okay, but at their own minutes, it says that they, they've got it, they're, they're approving, I, I believe they, they per, they approved the purchase order, you guys not? For 220, it's, it was right in your minutes.
That was not approved.
It says grounding loop purchase order 005B, 213,000. Is, is, it's going to be necessary?
The grounding loop is under consideration, there was no purchase order approved for $221,000.
Okay, but it's, it's just a matter of time before that happens. Were the other towers that are talking to each other, were those grounded also?
Yes.
So why didn't we know about the 231,000 or 213,000 that seemed to, to pop up?
Well, I don't know that it just popped up. It's a, it's a totality of the project. The more pieces of infrastructure you add to this project, speaking directly to it, the more that needs to be grounded. We're not convinced as a committee that we need $221,000 worth of grounding. That's still in consideration.
So I, I, I would just wish that the town council would actually take the time and read their minutes, because the more you look at this stuff, the more questions there are. For example, the firing range, we, we hired a consultant, right? We're assuming we have the best. But they didn't even realize that they, by code, that they needed a fire suppression system in there, which wasn't part of the, the scope. Nobody even knew it. But it, but it was state mandated, so now, in my opinion, they're trying to change it around to make it be suitable where either they don't have to have it or change the electrical panels. What is the status with that?
So that's not accurate. So we, we've always known we needed a fire suppression system in the firing range, or the firearms training center, as it's more properly called. What the architect has proposed is an alternative to save money, a, a fire suppression system other than a sprinkler system, um, to, to save money. That's, it's, it's examining alternatives, and we've been, we've been considering that for several meetings.
Okay, so I must be on a different planet, because I had lengthy discussions with Chief Ventura, and Chief Ventura, correct me anywhere along the line, because I've been pushing for this fire suppression unit, and is all this news, news that I'm just finding out now that you, you and everybody else knew all about this?
Oh, so we, it's, it needs to go for a code modification, and we're going to, we designed it, we had a meeting, and we're going to design a partially sprinkler system at the end of the firing range where you have the greatest fire hazard, that would be sprinkled. We also have, uh, smoke detectors in there, and we're also going to install surveillance cameras instead of the firing lines to be able to monitor it from remote access and dispatch.
No, I understand that, but, but Chairman Savoni just stated that you guys, everybody always knew that that was, that, that fire suppression system was a necessity? Were you aware of that?
I was not aware of it.
And nor, and nor was I. And I think I'm going to have to go back to the minutes, because I think that it was a surprise to everybody else there, too. And that, and that's why they, they reached out to the, the state, I think, to find out if, if they could change the code. I'll have to go back, because like I said, there's a lot of questions, this thing's a runaway train. Former Chief Wright said it was 16,000, Fishbein said 27 enough, he says, no, it's 23 is the number. Now we're, we're going to exceed, in my opinion, 38 million. We've been sitting on this thing for 30 years, that we're going to have to spend more money to move the antenna, when we should have put it here, so we don't have to double, like Mr. Glidden said. Spend, spend, we're, we're, we're paying two or three times for something to, to, to do once. As far as the fiber optics, chief, is, isn't a fiber optic line going from the, the police station to the new police station?
That's correct, yes.
And what's that going to, what's that going to be utilized for?
So everything that we have in our system right now, all of our servers that are onsite at 135 North Main Street have to get, all the data that are on those servers need to get transferred over to the new police department. So we have a fiber run that goes from 135 North Main to the new building, um, with a pretty high band rate to be able to transfer the data. And then once we're able to get the data transferred to the new server system, we can slow down the, um, actual speed on that.
But it's going to be continually communicating back and forth?
I would have to refer to my IT manager as far as how much he needs on that, or if we can abandon it, or we keep it running. I don't know the actual answer to that, but I do know that the original need for the fiber is to transfer the data from our current servers to the new servers.
Okay, so, because before you talked about a tree coming down, that's why we wouldn't be doing fiber.
So there is an option. So there is an option, if you, there's been suggestions that you run it, make a fiber connection to in order to run your communications, but in order to do that, um, the risk is created that if there is some sort of natural disaster, or something happens, and the fiber goes down, that that would interrupt the continuity of service for the actual Motorola, or the radio system, or the communication system. So I think it's almost, you know, I'm not, I'm not well-versed in the whole radio system, but I think that that are two different things. One's to transfer data, one would run the communications.
Okay, um, again.
So you're double your time, I'm just gonna check to see if anybody, anybody else in the public has comments. Oh, triple, sorry. Okay, go ahead.
Well, first off, I apologize for, for, for taking up triple my time. It's a $38 million project. I did everything else, correct? I reached out to you, I reached out to, to Chief, former Chief Wright, I reached out to Allison, I didn't get one, one damn answer. So I'm sorry that I'm wasting your time, but these are questions that you guys should have asked.
That's not the issue. The issue is that our rules give each speaker three minutes, and we have 20 minutes of public comment for item. That's the, that's the issue. And as for the communication to me, to which you keep referring, you just forwarded to me the email that you had sent to Mr. Wright without directing at me. You, you copied me on an email to the law department. Your, your email to me was not asking me for anything.
So, so, going back, and thank you. Going, going back, I thought it was pretty abundantly clear that I was looking, searching for an answer that I didn't get. Where do I find out the list of other permits that were required for this, for this tower, Mr. Wright?
The list? The list is quite long, some were responsible for, some the tower manufacturer, excuse me, the tower company is responsible for. There's environmental studies that are being done. We've done the FAA work, we've done the initial stages of the FCC work. We're required to consider, um, state, um, preservation, historic preservation, that's responsibility of the tower vendor. And I, and I just wanna go back to your comment about the Siding Council, and how, you know, we're not required to go before the Siding Council. I call the Siding Council, just like I did when we put the other two towers up five years ago. They're appreciative of our call, and I'll tell you why. They wanna know what towers are up and where they are. And although they don't have jurisdiction over a municipally-owned tower for communications purposes, specifically for public safety, which is true in this case, if a commercial vendor, Frontier, whomever, Verizon, want space on a tower somewhere, the Siding Council always looks to put them on a tower that is already up in the air. They manage how many towers are in the air and where they are. So now that they know where our tower is, should they get a request? Because the, although we're not required to go before the Siding Council, a commercial carrier is, most certainly, first, required to go to the Siding Council. The Siding Council will direct them here. And they're gonna look for consideration from the town to allow space on that tower. Now, the town has every right to say, no, we don't want that. Town owns the tower, has a right to say, no, we don't. But your assertion that we never had any obligation to go before the Siding Council is something that, um, as the, as the law is written, probably could mean that, but the proper and responsible thing to do is to talk to all these parties. And that's what we're doing.
Well, when, when you guys made the statement, it took me two months, and I did go to the Siding Council, and they said, no, it, it, because there is no cellular commercial carrier on that tower, it doesn't, is not a requirement, it's all by the local zoning. So, because if that was the case, why isn't the town then considering leasing the 100 or 150-foot tower that's up, up near my house, up Cook Hill Fire Department? And, and, and also, you got Dick Kaplan, if that was the case, he's got commercial antennas there, we could have, we could have parlayed the, the antenna that's at the police station and, and, and commercialize that, too, if that's the case. I just don't buy it. It, it's, the horse left the barn, too many balls in the air, things just keep changing. And, and again, where do I get this list? I didn't ask who's responsible, I want the list of all the requirements for this tower, the permits. Where do I get it?
I'm not sure.
Where do I go, Mayor?
I don't, I don't believe that a list exists. I mean, they're all separate elements, they're all handled by different parties, there is no single list that conveniently puts them all in a row. As the requirement comes up, different parties are handling them, applying for whatever permits or, or dealing with the necessities, so there's no single list.
So, so when did we find out about the FAA, the FCC?
That's part of the tower construction package, right? This is our vendor, our consultant, if you will, that, um, we put under contract to consider what Motorola was telling us. This is all he does. So when we entered into a contract with him for this tower, and for his consulting services, he provided us with a list of things that we might be responsible for. Into the bid spec, we wrote what other, in this case, the tower vendor would be responsible for. And along the way, to Mr. Glidden's point, up pops the still-current license for the heliport behind the old Grossman's. Although they're not doing any serviceable work there, they've maintained the license. For years and years and years, many of you may remember, that they used to land helicopters for the news channels at WY Clark on Barn South. Whether or not they have still maintained that license is an unknown, but this is what the work reveals. This is why you do the work. So up popped this still-current license for the heliport, for Hummingbird, and we've been granted permission by the FAA that our tower will not interfere with that flight path. These are the things that come up. It's a dynamic project. It's $40 million of hard work. No answer is easy, nothing is, is clear as it ever seems, a lot of it is as clear as mud, but the committee is dedicated. We're volunteers. I'm volunteering my time with the permission of my employer to serve on this committee, and I'm grateful they're giving me the time, because it's a worthwhile project that the town will realize for the next 50 years. And have we missed some things along the way? Sure. But have they caused us any more money? This is, wasn't missed, we're aware that this tower might be needed, we fought back against it, hopeful we didn't need to spend another $1.5 million of taxpayer money, but to your point, in your comment, it's not a runaway train. It's very much under control. We know exactly what we need to do. Let me give you an example. Nowhere on any piece of paper, on any plan, not in the building department, not in the blueprints we received from the prior owner of 100 Barnes, in the back where we started to add the addition for the Sallyport, they uncovered an previously unknown manhole. Not, didn't exist anywhere, was subsurface, five, six feet below ground, we needed to move it. $35,000, change order. No one could have foreseen that. These things pop up, we're on top of it. I give you a lot of confidence that this group is on top of it. It's not a runaway train.
And, and thank you for the time. I just happen to agree with, um, Counselor Tada before, still do, that we, one of the things that bothers me as a taxpayer, for all this money, it was never even entertained to build a brand-new building. I still think that it still would have been cheaper, right out of the gate, even if you bulldozed that existing building and started off fresh, have it all modernized, instead of trying to, to make all these things work. But it was never even brought up. That's my point. And I come to this microphone as, as a taxpayer and a volunteer, trying to give some information that may have sent you, saved you some time, including the fact about, about this, this, this tower. I still wanna get a copy of the list, because I'd like, I'd like to know what, what other problems might arise. Thank you.
Anyone else? There being none, I bring it back to the council. Uh, if there's no further comment or question from the council, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson?
Yes.
Carmandy?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Servoni?
Yes, the motion passes. Onto the public hearing on the bonding ordinance. I hereby convene the public hearing for the amendment of the $34,848,000 ordinance for the purchase of 100 Barnes Road and for the construction of a new police headquarters adopted January 24, 2023, to increase the appropriation and bond authorization by an additional $1,550,000 for the addition of a communications tower. The ordinance, which is the subject of this public hearing, is available to the public and may be obtained at this meeting or from the town clerk. Is there a motion and a second to read the title of the proposed ordinance and to waive the reading of the remainder of the ordinance incorporating its full text into the minutes of the meeting? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Laffin, seconded by Counselor Allenson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. An ordinance, amending an ordinance appropriating $34,848,000 for the purchase of 100 Barnes Road and for the construction of a new police headquarters and authorizing the issue of $34,848,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, impending the issuance thereof, making of temporary borrowings for such purpose to increase the scope of the project and increase the appropriation and bond authorization therein by an additional $1,550,000. Are there any comments from the public on the bond ordinance? Mr. Glidden?
Mike Glidden, Pomeroy Avenue. Um, it's during the previous item, uh, it brought me back to 2009, when I was employed with the town of Waterford. The town of Waterford went through the same process of studying all the radio towers in town, and in order to save money, the town actually partnered with Verizon, and also with another tower installer. And basically, these cell providers built the towers for free. On-town property, the town gets lease payments for all the coal locators on the towers. Um, I think that should have been explored, instead of bonding for more money, and as I said earlier, in poor fiscal management, once again, we're just adding money to a never-ending bond package. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, there being none, I close the public hearing. Is there a motion from the council, and second, that the proposed ordinance be adopted? Yes, so moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Laffin, seconded by Counselor Allenson. Discussion on the council? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson?
Yes.
Carmandy?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Tada?
No.
Testa? Zandry?
Yes.
Servoni?
Yes. Motion passes, and the ordinance is adopted as amended.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time and your presentation. The next item, item eight, discussion regarding citizen concerns with respect to Choate expansion activities. Counselor Zandry, your item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everybody. So, I, I've got a, a little bit of an introduction that I, I tried to make, that I wanna make, and I wanted to try to make this as linear as I possibly could, but with, with all the moving parts of the different requests that came in, it's gonna be a little bit different, difficult. So, first I wanna address why, why I opted to choose this, this council meeting over a future date, because I got, I got some feedback from, from some of the, some of the concerned individuals, that, you know, in the middle of the summer, they weren't gonna be able to, to make the, to make the request. And I said, listen, these are our options. If I, if I wait, then we get the complaints that the council is stalling, or are not willing to take action. If I wait, and we do it in September, and there are 12 items on the agenda, and we're discussing this at 10:30 at night, the time is inconvenient. I knew that, as history has shown us, these summer meetings are usually light with respect to the amount of items that are on the agenda, so I figured, if I've, I've gotta make a decision one way or the other, I'm gonna try and choose a, a lighter agenda to try to get this on. Um, I did try to encourage people to send me, or any of the counselors for that matter, um, any questions or information that they wanted to have discussed, if they couldn't make it in person, I did get some. Um, so I, I appreciate all of the, all of the different conversations that came out of this item, and, and I kinda wanna address the, the actual item itself. You know, it, it was the initial set of contacts that I had, they, the, the initial topic was Choate's expansion, so that's why the, the item is outlined as citizen concerns with respect to Choate expansion activities. But the conversation is bigger than that, and it always is. And it, it takes place where, where, where we have conversations today, and that's, that's social media, that's Facebook. A hundred years ago, it would have been in the town square, that's the way they did it back then. Um, the biggest medium that the people have to engage in regular conversation is, is social media, the largest element seems to be Facebook, and, and that's where a lot of this activity and conversation takes place. Now, I get that a lot of times, people will complain that, you know, it's, it's a big burden to have stuff on social media, and I, and I disagree. It's, it's a lot, everything's a lot of work, based on how you're gonna do it. If you're trying to solicit input from people, you, you've gotta have a medium to do it, whether you got a town crier out in the town square, or you've got a Facebook that's active. Um, I, I, I look at Facebook as a tool. A hammer's a tool. I can build things with that hammer, or I can ruin things with that hammer. It's all a matter of how you use the tool. And Facebook is no exception, and neither are other things that people use. One of the, one of the issues that we have with, with any social media avenue is the fact that data and information tend to not only be, um, marginalized and opinionized, sometimes it's, it's entirely misdirected. And I'll give you, I'll give you a different example before I get into the subject matter. I don't know how many posts I've personally been tagged in about solar power in Wallingford. Someone will ask, I'm interested in doing solar in Wallingford, and someone will respond, Wallingford doesn't do solar. And the problem is, these different individuals respond with a level of authority, as if they're subject matter experts on it, and the original person walks away believing that they can't do solar in Wallingford. And the reason that I bring this up is, it, the same thing happens with town council taking action on items, things going on in Cho, things going on in the school system, a lot of things are either outright incorrect, or so far out of context, that it's more work to try to bring them back and explain them, than if we could just have a public meeting about it. And so that's really why, based on some of the comments that I started to read on this one topic, I wanted to have an item for, for an open discussion. So that's, that's really why I brought it here. So, one of the other elements that came out of that discussion is, is a, an opinion, and everybody's entitled to their opinions, that the council doesn't do as much as they should do. And I, I kinda wanna defend that opinion a little bit. I think that things that are brought to, to the council, whether at public question and answer, to us individually, I think all of us engage as best we can. Um, not everything happens at a meeting. I guarantee you, we could go up and down this table and discuss the last email we all got, and the last action we all took, and none of it was at one of these meetings. Call Public Works, the Department of Engineering, Planning and Zoning Office, we follow up with, with constituent and, and resident problems all the time. Just because you don't see it, doesn't mean it's not happening. Some things are outside our purview. Even some of the discussion elements that came out of the Choate subject matter, we'll leave it at that. Why doesn't the council do something about this? Some of it deals with planning and zoning, it's not our purview. We can reach out to Planning and Zoning, ask a question, why they made a decision to do something, why they didn't, and we can get back to that, that constituent and explain it to them. So I, I wanna emphasize that, I thought this was a good idea. I thought this was a good idea to say, hey, listen, if what you want is a public I thought this was a good idea to say, hey, listen, if what you want is a public hearing, and what you want, and I use the term "public hearing" loosely, more like a town hall conversation, and then let's, why not do it? Let's do it. Let's find out what people's thoughts are, what people's opinions are, what they would like to see done. They may want some additional communication from us, from Choate, from somebody else. They've got some ideas around things they would like to see done. I'm reminded about something in my own field of technology, and the reason that I'm going to bring this up is we get, most people are familiar with Office, you know, Microsoft Office. I don't know how many times we get requests for design changes in Word, in Excel, that are already there. People just don't know about it. And I think that's a key element here. I think that with all the different things that we want to see with, again, whether it's the schools, Doolittle Park, Choate, whatever it might be, there's a lot of activity already going on that maybe you don't know about. And so as I kind of make this introduction, and I'm going to kind of go into a direct preamble about these elements, and then I guess I'll pass it back to the council for any other comments and/or the end result, which is what I wanted the public to come forward, I kind of want to outline some of the discussion points that have come in to me. And one of the big ones has been, you know, why aren't we taxing Choate? And the simple answer is technically we can't because of the institution that they are. And then the discussion segues around to, well, why aren't we collecting any type of pilot from them? Why isn't the council doing anything? It's really not the council's purview. I suppose we could come up with a resolution that might be something we'd like to do, but we'd have to direct it to the administration. At the same time, I think it's important to understand the element of that ask. Why would we want to ask for pilot? Well, because they're buying up properties, and that's the other piece of the element. What is their expansion plan? What is it they've been doing? So I started to dig into a lot of this information, and I had a lot of help. I'm going to tell you right now, there's no way in the time period that I had that I would have been able to put this all together without the help of the people that gave me this information. And I looked some of it up on my own, but then I had follow-up questions. I wanted to quantify how much property Choate has bought up because I think sometimes perception and reality are different things. Since 2000, Choate's purchased exactly 11 properties, 11 in 23 years. The way people talk, it sounds like they're buying up property every other weekend. And actually, of those 11 properties, nine of them, nine of them are exempted from real estate property tax. One of them is still a rental property and remains taxable, and one was sold after being acquired. So it's actually back out, it's gone. So the idea is that there's only 10 properties that they've bought and maintained and kept over 23 years. Now, this doesn't mean there isn't an expansion program going on. There might be. What I also want to make sure that people understand is that in a lot of these cases, Choate did not actively go out and seek to pick these properties up. The property owners approached Choate and said, look, we're thinking of selling, would you be interested in this? Not every time did Choate actually buy these properties. And in some cases, it wasn't even a sale element. Somebody left it to Choate. They basically, I don't know what all the details are, they were gifted to the school. Somebody passed away, a dwelling might have been in a fund or something, and it was given to the school. In the past three years, Choate's been approached by seven private property owners in Wallingford Center about selling their property to Choate. In all seven cases, Choate's declined those opportunities to buy. Again, I'm not saying they don't have an expansion plan. I believe they do. They are doing different things with their campus and their grounds, but I want to put it into perspective. I don't believe it's as aggressive as everybody believes it is. I, again, I had some help with some of these numbers because I would not have been able to get them all on their own, and I'm going to, I thought I saw him in here. There he is. Okay, I want to make sure I saw Sean. I'm going to mention the Y, I'm not picking on the Y. But the Y purchased 8 North Turnpike Road. They removed that from the tax rolls. It's not malicious, it's, they're a nonprofit. That means Wallingford lost $41,000 in tax revenue from that purchase. All the properties that Choate has removed in 23 years is, they're being exempted at $52,500. So it took 23 years for them to finally exceed what the Y did in one move. Now, I want to make sure that people understand that because neither one of these organizations did that maliciously. Oh, let me buy something and get it taken off the tax rolls. I want that for a comparison element. And the reason I want that for a comparison element, it goes back to that whole, hey, you know, if they're taking stuff off the tax rolls, why don't we, you know, why aren't we getting it back? Why don't we do something? There's a lot of that that happens. It is a natural activity of any nonprofit that expands what it is that they're doing. Another element that I think that, no, I know that, I'm going to say, I'm going to know that most people aren't aware of, I certainly wasn't, and I'm pretty plugged into things. And the entire Laurelwood Drive area adjacent to the campus was a 65 vacant acre area that Choate had originally owned. This is back in 1976, they sold it. So because they sold that and houses were built out there, there is $300,000 in annual tax revenue coming into the town because that development occurred out there. We talk about, you know, what is it that Choate contributes? You know, we get a lot of these different discussions around, they consume town services. We all do. Everybody does. I'm going to make a generic statement about consumption of town services and come back to this. Nobody in this town pays an equitable amount for the town services they do. Nobody, they get, nobody does. If someone has a $600,000 house and someone has a $300,000 house and somebody owns a mid-sized sedan or rents an apartment, everybody is paying a disproportionate amount of the services that they're getting. We're all taxed, we're not given a bill, we're taxed, and then we get access to these services. So a lot of times, the discussion element around, again, it tends to focus on Choate, is they're not paying their fair share for police, for fire, for the burden they put downtown. They make their own investments, too. I'm not going to go through this whole list. I've got 11 pages of information that I looked up. I'm just going to bring up some of the bigger and more relevant ones. In 2021, Choate spent $1.4 million to enhance all of that public safety area where the Choate students cross. 1.4 million. Now, one side of the argument is going to be, well, that's for their students, they get to use it, of course, they're going to fix it. We all can walk North Elm Street and Christian Street. We all can utilize the sidewalk improvements, the crossing improvements, they paid for them. So when we look at these different things that the nonprofits do, and I'm only focusing on Choate now, there's other nonprofits in this town that do other things as well. We have to take into consideration everything that they do. Now, this doesn't excuse any of them from the regular elements of what they need to do as far as zoning regulations, all of that. So I'm not suggesting that anybody gets any type of special benefit either. They need to go to the meetings, they need to get, they should go in and be able to show when they're going for an exception that they've got an accurate exception. I want to make sure that as the public comes forward, because they asked, you know, they wanted to come speak about different elements, that they take all of these different items into consideration because I don't think it's as cut and dried as a lot of people make it. But I think the only way to engage in a conversation and to say, hey, look, I think, the Y is in the room, I'm going to pick on the Y. The Y should be doing more of this with Doolittle Park, and maybe Choate should be doing this a little bit more over here, that we get into this dialogue and have this conversation. But there also should be an understanding of maybe what they already do. I don't think that it's right that anybody, I don't care whether it's a citizen, an organization, a counselor, that does stuff quietly in a vacuum in the back room. We go out and we dedicate our time to doing stuff, and again, regular citizens do it, too. I watched them over at the animal shelter walk in the dogs. If you don't know what people are doing, I think it's harder to sit there and criticize and say, they should be doing more if you don't know what they're doing in the first place. So it's with all that and in the spirit of all that, that I did want to put this item on the agenda because I believe that if residents have concerns, that expansion has caused an issue, if the next purchase might be a problem, if there's a concern about, hey, if they're going to do work, tear up a sidewalk, what might they do? Maybe a resident isn't clear, maybe an open forum is a good place to ask that question. And that's why I wanted to put the item on the agenda. And depending on how it goes, maybe we have an opportunity to revisit this particular item in the future if there's more questions, more concerns, or even if there are additional follow-ups on other things in town. If there are other pilot programs we should be looking at, if there's other, you know, green space things we should be doing, maybe we should do a few more of these public-type sessions where we can really go out and ask for that input. And really, that was the genesis of how this all happened, and Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to kind of roll out the explanation of why I wanted to open this item up. Thank you.
Sure. Counselor Tada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two things that were brought to my attention from somebody who lives in the area that I just wanted to bring up during this. One of the concerns in regards to taxes is that many of the faculty have children that live in their homes, obviously, that are using our schools, and they just wanted me to bring that point up. And then I just wanted to go over the total, this actually came from the assessor, so the total amount of properties, the assessed total, $170,134,640. Motor vehicles is $572,840. So the potential total taxes would be $4.9 million, and the current taxes paid are $17,618. So that was just something I wanted to put out there during this. Thank you.
Anything else from the council? Members of the public? Last meeting, you told us we didn't give away a million dollars. I'm just reminding you of that.
Yeah, I know. And if Choate applied for money, I'd probably tell you to pay them, too. No, I'm a neighbor of Choate, Jesse Reynolds, 850 Old Durham Road. The Kohler Center is across the street from my house. We walk through the Kohler Center, it's a lovely grounds. My kids walk through there, we walk our dog through there. My family, for the better part, has lived across the street from Choate for probably close to about 100 years, give or take. My grandfather and my great uncle used to fix the end drive, the school buses at Choate. I guess my point, or the reason why I came, because nobody else did, was that, you know, you mentioned 10 homes since 2000, but how many total houses have they purchased in total? $4 million compared to $17,000 is, there's a big gap. And I'd like to know when exactly was the last time they adjusted what they're giving to the town in terms of pilot, given the amount of properties that they purchased? And then just for an apples-to-oranges kind of comparison, the Y bought a commercial building that is assessed in a different way than each house is assessed, and so the $40,000 that the Y took off the rolls by buying the old gym is a little bit of a different scenario, I would think, than each individual home that comes off. Because if the average taxes in town is about $6,000, then you're talking about $60,000 a year that just compounds itself and gets adjusted. You know, Choate's a good neighbor to me, Choate's a good neighbor to the town. You know, I sometimes, though, when people bring it up to me, you know, what are their options? Are they going to leave? They're not going to leave. So I don't see why the town can't come forward and say, hey, let's talk about the arrangement that we have. You know, if your faculty live in homes that used to be on the tax rolls that now you're living in without going into the tax rolls and your children attend the schools, and that's all fine and well, but there is a cost there. The sidewalks and things that Choate fixed in that area had to be fixed, and they had to put the guardrails up basically on the roads because people were walking through the road and it was dangerous. Those are all public sidewalks they fixed. We could walk there anyway. We could enjoy those crosswalks just the same. So, you know, I just, I have this, you know, I don't, I just wanted to kind of bring to light the fact that there's a lot of money that we do not collect. And when we're, you know, whenever anyone suggests that money should be collected, it's always, well, they do a lot for the town. Well, a lot of organizations and things do for the town. I think it needs to be revisited. I think we need to start thinking a little bit more, especially if we're going to, or can we do something to sort of bridge the gap between them? If somebody approaches them and says, hey, I'd like you to buy my property, or if they approach somebody and say, hey, we'd like to buy your property, given their nonprofit status and their status in town, is there anything that we can do where we could actually step in, not and stop the deal, but somehow, I don't know, be involved in some way? I don't know. But anyway, thank you for letting me speak.
Hello, Mike 50377, North Elm Street. Mrs. Tada, could you give me the last fact that you gave on your list?
Sure. The potential total taxes?
Yeah.
And the actual taxes paid currently are $17,618.
$17,000. Mr. Zandry, would you care to share with us where you got your information?
Which information?
All the facts.
So the information that I gave outlined the fact that the houses that they removed since 2000 total out a reduction in our tax assessment of $52,000. Now, that is houses they took off the tax rolls. Counselor Tada is correct. If you take all of their property, everything that they own, and assess it out and tax it, it's $4 million. If I go to Ashler Village and do the same thing, I'll come up with a big fat number as well.
Well, not that I doubt your word, but I just want, if I want to check the facts that you had stated, how many homes were acquired in the last so many years, where do I find that information? The way you found it?
Yeah, the way I found it, I got in touch with Allison Katie, who is the communications officer over at Choate, and she gave me all this information. And then I double-checked it with the sales records, you know, the land records when houses are sold. And I took a look at a few of them, and as soon as the sum of them matched up, I said, I don't need to look at them all.
Okay. Thank you. Can somebody explain to me, I forgive my ignorance, this pilot situation or what exactly that entails and who would work that out?
Well, generally, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, did you want me to address that?
You're on a roll.
All right. So any time that there's a situation in town where something is not going to be taxed, whether it's the, oh, let me, I got some examples in front of me. Property or equipment like McKenna Court, Ashler Village, Covanta, Transco, we, the town will enter into the discussion to assess and become, and get to an agreement on what should be given. In other words, there's, I'll use Ashler Village as an example because that one gets brought up a lot, too. Certain organizations fall under a scope where they don't have to give anything. They're not required to do They're not required to do anything under the state statute. But they understand their responsibility, that they should do something. So if they're doing twenty thousand dollar donations, and gee, that just doesn't make up for all the services they consume, they think they're doing a lot, they're really not. So an entity gets involved, the town, the state, whoever it might be, and they say, look, we've gotta come up with a better arrangement for what you're consuming. And it gets hammered out, and it comes to an agreement, they, they, they settle on some dollar amount, and that usually maintains pretty steadily. So whether it's, um, sewer assessments, uh, state-owned property, um, solar landfill, what we get for that pilot, the, these are different things that get hammered out from the administration side to the, to the owner of the property, the dwelling, the, the nonprofit, whatever it might be.
So obviously, the two entities come together and they, and they discuss how they could somehow, uh, correct a situation that is probably, in the public's eye, not correct or whatever.
Right. In other words, if there, if there's-
But we don't have such a program, right, or an agreement with Choate at this time?
As, as far as I know, there's, there's, there's nothing in the pilot statement. The only taxes that we actually collect are on the few dwellings that they still pay tax on, that's the seventeen thousand that Counsel Tada identified. So there is no fixed pilot designation that is set every year in our budget.
Do you think maybe, uh, you, you started this whole conversation by all the complaints you get in emails or things on Facebook, do you think it's at a point now where we need to sit down with them and come up with something like a pilot? Because, you know, there are a lot of, there's a lot of bad vibes out there, as you know. There have been a lot of controversial things that have been going on lately between Choate and the town, uh, the buildings and all that stuff. And no, we don't want that situation to continue. We want to get along. Um, do you think maybe, uh, people in town would be, um, satisfied with knowing there was some kind of an agreement with them to, to offset some other costs or whatever? I mean, are we at that point now where we need to sit down and make townspeople who are so against everything that Choate does and all that kind of stuff? Um, you know, maybe it's time to sit down and alleviate some of those concerns, if they know such a thing is happening.
Yeah, so I, and that's why I wanted to have the discussion. I wanted to take the temperature of the room, so to speak, because-
The room is empty almost.
Well, you know what, I, this room's often almost, almost always empty.
Yeah, I know. I've been in your position many times.
I, I look at it this way. I'm, I'm here for the people. First off, my duty, like everybody else's, is for all the residents of Wallingford. But I, my, the way I look at it is, I'm here for the people who showed up. So I'm, I'm definitely interested in, in the, in the questions and the comments for the people that, that come to the room, and of course, the ones that, that contact us separately. So I, I do believe the, the volume on this is getting a little bit louder, where they're, they're basically, the people are saying, hey, look, why aren't we looking at stuff like this? And it's not an unfair question. Here is my only concern with that. And again, this is why I kind of started off with that whole preamble that I had. I wanted to make sure that if we come to that conversation someday, we really raise the temperature on that. The people that are asking, do you know what they do to begin with? And if you still think it's not enough, and there really should be a set pilot, we could pass a resolution that the administration should engage. Um, we, the administration might engage all on their own. I think there's another real concern that, that people need to think about. If money comes in through a pilot, there's a lot of variables on that. First off, it might not even be the amount of services that we already get from Choate. What I mean by that is, just to make an example, the sidewalk work, other things that they might be doing, um, you know, with other donations, uh, other, uh, there's a lot of other things that I want to make sure I got the list correct, and it's a little bit farther down in my eleven pages of stuff here. The, the in-kind use that they give to different organizations, Holy Trinity School, Quinipiac Chamber of Commerce, United Way, they do a lot of in-kind services for these organizations on top of cash donations, because that's the way that they're operating. Now, if a pilot comes in and just ends up in the general fund, you know, what, what ends up happening at that point is, you know, there isn't twenty thousand dollars for Doolittle Park. There aren't twenty-five thousand dollars for new benches in Wallingford Center. There aren't twenty-five thousand dollars coming in for the school planetarium. That's stuff that Choate's done, and I've got a longer list. The only reason I bring that up is, if this is really something that the people want to do, they've gotta look at it through all lenses. Because you might get what you want. If, if, if what, if what the residents want, and I'm just gonna throw a spitball number out there, they want five hundred thousand dollars of pilot coming in. Maybe that's what ends up happening. But then maybe a lot of this stops, because they have to pay this money out in an agreement form, and they say, look, we gave the pilot to the town, the town's gonna do what they want with it. And maybe they sit on it.
On the town side, who initiates a pilot?
Far as I know, it's the administration side.
The administration. Does the town council have anything to say about that? At all?
We, and, and that's why I said, we could always send a resolution. If, if, if we wanted to put up a separate item about having the administration look into doing it, we could take a, a, a vote on it. All it does is, it's a symbolic vote, saying, we'd like you to do this.
Okay. You know, it's just that there has been, you know, there's a, I think many residents in town have issues, and I think some of the things you mentioned, they don't know about. Um, and I think there are still some other things that could be solved, and maybe a pilot could do that. I, I don't know. I just, um, you know, I think back to, uh, the Kohler Center and the former president of Choate, you know, oh, maybe we can let the kids from Wallingford use it. And that was a big controversy, if you remember. Now, that sticks in people's mind, minds. I mean, I, I met, I met with him, with the superintendent of schools, I was chairman of the board, and I asked him right out, are we gonna be able to use it? The answer was no. So, you know, those kind of things still stay in your mind. Those things that you mentioned people don't know. I mean, I think we need to educate, and maybe that'll solve some of these issues that you bring up and problems that people have. But I think we should, my personal opinion is, I think we should approach that, the pilot, because I think there might be some other things that could more directly, uh, make people feel better about the situation. Thank you.
Uh, Counsel Allison, did you want to speak before we went to the public again? Okay. Uh, Mr. Knight?
Excuse me, Steve Knight, two eighty-nine Ivy Street. I'm curious about the pilots that we keep talking about, these pilots that, that other organizations in town are paying. And I believe we're primarily talking about Gaylord and Masonic.
I, I have a list, if you want me to rattle them off.
He's got a list.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry?
Well, I, I think, I think you, pilots typically have to be, um, allowed by state statute or federal. So there are pilots paid by Wallingford Housing Authority, but they're set out in federal rules. There are pilots, um, paid pursuant to solar displays. That is laid out in the agreement that the entity enters into with the town, and it's authorized, that they're, they're making a payment of some kind. For the most part, uh, with regard to the Ashler Village pilot, uh, that was the settlement of a lawsuit. And, uh, they had legal arguments, the town had legal arguments, and the arguments were settled with a, uh, settlement as far as how much they would pay out of a, a total tax bill. So in all those cases, there's statutory legal language that certainly justifies the position of each party about whether or not they owe taxes. When it comes to educational institutions and nonprofits, uh, there is no such language anywhere. So basically, you're asking out of generosity, out of, um, whatever philanthropic or other, other reasons a person can, can come up with, uh, that a person make a payment, um, because they want to. It's not really a legal argument anymore. It's, it's just, hey, please pay us money. I, I think, I think that's particularly where state and federal law recognize nonprofits for a reason, and that is that they are tax-exempt. As a policy, a public policy measure, they are recognized under our laws as tax-exempt. So when, then a, an organization or, or a municipality goes forward and says, well, we want you to pay money anyway, I, I, I think there's, there's a real question there. Are, are we really honoring the purpose of that institution? And to what degree does that help or hurt their mission, which is to see that, in this case, education is pursued? It, it certainly starts touching on issues of, of even religious institutions, and whether they should be taxable, whether they should be paying pilots. I'm not sure how far you go once you enter an arena in which it's no longer based in law, it's no longer based in regulation, it's based upon a desire for money.
Thank you, uh, for clarifying, pretty much saying what I wanted to in the first place, but in much more, um, authoritative manner. This, uh, difficulty, and I'm putting that in quotes, with Choate, probably goes back a hundred years. There's always been a resentment by certain people in the community that this independent organization doesn't pay taxes. Now, one of the, one of the things I would like to mention is, if all of their property, if Choate didn't exist in Wallingford, and all of that property had been developed residentially, and you know darn well that a residence had, Mr. Zandry said it, there isn't a resident with, with more than one person in the school system that pays their way. Every acre of that property could have been developed residentially. And we would, we would be in a world of hurt. I look at Choate in, in a large measure as open space, because it's, residents don't pay their fair share. They can't, they cannot be charged the way businesses are charged. So I, I really have a question about whether we want to start hammering an organization that is, one, has been a good neighbor to this community since its inception, and that we feel entitled to tax. I think we're missing the big picture of what Choate does for this town, and it, and the, and the being in the center of this community. And it makes it a much richer, and frankly, less dense town center. And I think we should be very happy about that. I think it's made a world of difference in the way this town feels to the rest of us that live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we have time for one more speaker. I saw Mr. Glynn's hand first.
Phil Uker, twenty-nine Curtis Avenue. I'll try and be quick. I'm a teacher, and I worked for, for my first fourteen years of my teaching career at Choate, after which I left school, uh, the school, and I've been working seventeen years out of school. I have no resentment about Choate. I purchased a house directly across the street from the campus, and, um, just, I think I've gained an outside perspective on a lot of this. So I've heard, I wasn't going to speak, but I heard a lot of other people say some things, and I thought they might be, uh, they prompted some thoughts. Um, uh, one thing that was brought up was about pilot programs and how we in town want pilot programs. I think it's worth mentioning that just at the state level, in this last legislative session, there were two proposed bills, uh, to help towns be compensated for institutions like Choate, which are tax-exempt and not covered under current legislation. Neither one of those made it to the floor, but consistently, at the years at the state level, people are thinking about the burdens and the possibilities of, um, enacting, expanding pilot programs to include secondary educational schools. I don't know. One question I might have is, what are some of the voluntary pilot programs that some of Choate's peer schools, like Deerfield, Hotchkiss, Exeter, what do they do with their towns? Uh, Mr. Zandry, I don't know if that was part of your inquiry and information gathering. I think that's more of an apples-to-apples type of comparison.
And I, I did try to, I did try to find some of that information, and I did not get enough response back to try to figure out what those were. But the only, the only comparison I had was Yale and New Haven, which Yale's much, much larger, and it's not-
Right. And I think comparing a secondary school to an upper, higher-level education, college, university is not really-
Yeah.
-a fair comparison. With regard to, uh, something the mayor said about whether it's appropriate or not, I think it's just worth pointing out that for the past two years, the town of Greenwich has been pursuing, and I imagine that Choate's probably aware of this and following this, has been pursuing, um, uh, challenging the language of the law, not changing the law, but just addressing the question of whether, uh, faculty residences would qualify as educational use buildings under the law. It's questionable, a little bit vague in terms of interpretation. So that's currently underway. And then, lastly, um, with regard to the more planning and zoning side of things, I've gotten much more knowledgeable about all of that, a little bit nerded out on it, I guess. But, um, looking back at a Record Journal article from twenty sixteen, uh, represent, Attorney Joe Malloy was quoted as saying, "Choate cannot reasonably expect to meet the needs of students with regulations designed for single residences." So that was quite a while ago. However, it continues to be a residential zone. Um, I've spoken with Mr. Puccini, the town planner, about whether he's approached the school, about changing things, becoming a planned developmental district. Uh, instead, we just keep going through the same processes of obtaining variances for educational institution buildings in a residential district and not changing anything. So I don't know what the town council could do in terms of helping grease those wheels, motivate things along a little bit. That could be a benefit for both the town and the school. And then finally, um, just, Mr. Reynolds asked a question that I think there might be an answer to. When, when residences are bought, um, and brought into the school as educational use buildings, our regulations seem to say that they are supposed to obtain a special permit to change the use from residential use to educational use. Therefore, they would then qualify for tax exemption based on educational use. Um, there's all those homes, those eleven properties, I don't think any special permits have been obtained for those. I've run this question by, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission downstairs and haven't really gotten a very satisfactory answer. So I'd love to find out why, um, the school can take a residence, then claim it as educational use without following our regulations. That would also then involve more discussion and public input and more information being out there, rather than just, oh, these are being taken off the tax rolls. Thank you.
So we're well over time for public comment. Council wants to hear more, I'll, I'll allow it. I know Counsel Allison wanted to speak. If I could get some- I know Counselor Allenson wanted to speak, if I could get some sense. Counselor Fishbein.
I just, it seemed to be an inquiry as to whether or not we wanted to hear more. I know that one individual in the audience expressed an interest and the chairman was so inclined, you know. I don't want to say anything, but I'm certainly interested in hearing from the public.
Sure. You two fight it out, one of you come forward.
When the trap door opens, I know it wasn't me, that was.
Actually, I wasn't pointing at you, but go ahead.
I guess I'm the lucky winner. Good evening, my name is Allison Katie, I'm the Chief Communications Officer at Choate Rosemary Hall. I live at 36 Curtis Avenue. I've been employed at the school for 11 years and I actually moved to Wallingford to take this post with the school. In addition to serving as spokesperson for the school, I oversee community relations, external events, and marketing communications for the school. If you don't know, at schools like ours, people wear very, very many different hats, so I've got my hands in a lot of things. I serve as an advisor to students, I do dorm duty, I have worked in schools like Choate for 25 years. So yes, I do pride myself on being someone that can answer questions about the school and can connect folks in the community with resources and information that the school may need, they may need from the school, excuse me. And I think for those of you that I have had a chance to interact with, I do make myself available, I always answer emails, I'm happy to take a phone call, and I don't think social media is the best way to have a conversation or get accurate information. So coming here, this even without a lot of context, it was difficult for me to know how to prepare comments. On one hand, this forum seems to have provided an effort to gain clarity into Choate's development and construction plans, however, the side narrative always seems to come back to what the institution's value and place in the community is. So let me take a brief stab at both. In the past, and in particularly over the last 12 months, we have been asked about the school's building and renovation plans, the transparency of those plans, and the goals of our projects and plans for the future. Our position on all of that is really quite simple. In order to remain a top independent boarding school, Choate will need to invest and maintain upgrading its physical plant, just as the public and private organizations need to do so to stay relevant, competitive, and at the top of their respective field. The school and many of its core buildings are over 100 years old, so it is a matter of maintenance, but also relevance. Our prospective students and families have evolved, they're discerning consumers, looking for the absolute best options for their students. That experience includes top-notch facilities, innovative programs. Many prospective families travel from across the US, the world, to visit Choate and Wallingford as they compare and shop for schools. And many of those families choose Choate in part because of Wallingford and the school's location near Wallingford Center. As boarding schools across the US and Canada face growing enrollment challenges, and some of them close, we need to keep our campus and facilities up to date and ready to offer the top-notch experience our families demand. Recent renovation building plans address these needs, improving dining options in the servery, creating community space in Colony Hall, updating dorm rooms in Hill House, thanks to a little lightning, planning a welcome center for our new applicants. And if we don't continue to improve, we risk losing applicants' tuition and our strong standing among boarding schools. And why is all of that important? Well, for many reasons, but a few I want to mention. We offer transformational experiences and unparalleled opportunities to young people from around the world. We think our work matters and the world, for the world now and in the future, and we were preparing great kids to become leaders. We're invested, our school was started here in 1890. We believe that in what we do, the faculty, staff, and students that choose to work and go to school with us choose Choate, but they also choose Wallingford. And what we offer about, is about the classes, the activities, the sports, but most importantly, it is about community. The adults, families, and students that work at Choate buy into our campus community as well as the community around us. That is very important and part of the endeavor that we strive for. To that end, it has been at the heart of our approach at Choate to be a community partner and an engaged neighbor. We aim to have ongoing relationships with the town and our neighbors and to determine where and how we can contribute to improve the community year over year. We appreciate our privilege and rather than participate from afar, we would much rather engage with the community and contribute as active participants, making Wallingford the surrounding community the best it can be. We don't want this to be transactional. After all, this is our hometown too. I hope our commitment is abundantly clear. Thank you.
Under a minute. John Woolworth, Laurelwood Drive. My comment was going to be addressed to some of the concerns that were expressed at Inland Wetlands, which was regarding flooding. There is an issue with Wharton Brook that the town can actually respond to. There's a backwater issue that actually is forcing the water back into some properties that is really not the fault of the institution itself. So another thing, this is a good actually scenario to discuss, is how, what can the town do to actually relieve flooding problems? The EEP has a video on various funding options. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Glidden, you'll be after this one.
Chairman Savoni, Vice Chairman Laughlin, and members of the Wallingford Town Council. I'm Gary Carluglio, Vice President of Sales at the Quinnipiac Chamber of Commerce. And I stand in support of Choate Rosemary Hall. I have a letter that we'd like to submit, I can read it if you'd like, but if I can submit this for the record, that's what I'm here to do tonight. On behalf of the members of the Quinnipiac Chamber of Commerce, I'm writing as an advocate for Wallingford businesses. The Quinnipiac Chamber of Commerce is a business association of 400 members, from sole proprietorships to large international companies and local nonprofit organizations. With a full calendar of events and programs, the chamber supports business and community growth, provides legislative, educational, and marketing opportunities to its members. The chamber is supportive of Choate Rosemary Hall's expansion plans, which will create more stability and opportunity for growth in the town of Wallingford. Choate Rosemary Hall is a good corporate citizen, working diligently to address any concerns that are raised and working closely with the business community. We believe that Choate's plans are consistent with the character of the town of Wallingford and will contribute to the long-term development of the town. The chamber is also focused on strengthening the workforce, which plays a critical role in our region's overall success. Choate Rosemary Hall is a chamber member in good standing and a community partner on workforce strategies, not only educating our young, but also as one of the, I think, the fifth-largest employer in the town. We have had a positive experience working with the school. Choate does a great job of training their students with the skills necessary to enter the workforce and fill critical gaps. The work Choate does to educate, train, and engage their students for successful careers is important in addressing labor shortages. In addition, the workforce benefits Choate provides, Choate students, their families, faculty, and staff are critical drivers of commerce in Wallingford. They support the local business community that are key to Wallingford's economy and environment. Their students enrich the local community and our businesses through their internships and volunteer work. In addition to this, Choate purchases from local suppliers. Around 77% of students attending Choate are boarding students, and these students relocated to Wallingford to attend Choate. Student spending generated about 1.2 million in added income for the town in fiscal year '22. The total spending of Choate, its students, and its visitors increased the gross regional product by 43.6 million. This demonstrates the economic value that Choate provides Wallingford, I think we would all agree with that, in addition to the workforce and community benefits that Choate also provides. We believe that Choate Rosemary Hall's expansion plan will allow the school to continue to succeed in the education market and support its current student body size. This will ensure that their students' current educational needs are being met with the appropriate facilities to support those needs. This in turn will help support the economic development of the town of Wallingford and spur the local economy. On behalf of the members of the Quinnipiac Chamber, we thank you for your consideration. We look forward to working with you on this and other important issues going forward as we support businesses and Wallingford's economic growth. Thank you.
Thank you. You can hand it to the clerk, you can email it to her, whatever your pleasure may be.
I can email it, I'll hand it in.
Certainly. Mr. Glidden.
Mike Glidden, Palmeroy Avenue. I agree with Counselor Zandry that some of us taxpayers, we don't pay enough of what we get out of the services. The way I disagree is we pay. So I have two children that are enrolled in Wallingford Public Schools. Let's just say per pupil's pay between $15,000 and $20,000 for them to go through the schools. Now granted, I don't pay 15,000 or I don't pay 30,000 to 40,000 in property taxes. I just got my tax bill, I'm just under $7,000. So yeah, but I'm paying my share. You have faculty that live on campus, some of which send their children to public schools. They are not paying anything. That's where the pilot payment would come into play. So it's a fairer approach. Will it cover the bill for every student that's enrolled for a faculty that's at Choate? No. It would level the playing field where, just like us, they're paying a portion of the bill for their children in our public schools. The other thing I just want to just briefly hit on is Mr. Woolworth's comment regarding flooding. I'm not one of the neighbors that has the immediate concerns with flooding and construction activities. I'm one of the downstream people that will tell you, from Center Street Bridge down, I'm between Center Street and Wall Street. And the two storms last summer would be a great example, where the September storm, the water came up within 18 inches of getting into my house. I have pictures of the swing set in my backyard where you could just see the top of the tower that's on the side the kids play in, and my shed is, you could just see the top of my shed. Flooding in the Wharton Brook watershed is a huge issue. When the application for the admission center was before the Wetlands Commission, I actually reached out and talked to the design engineer, and he acknowledged that the culvert is undersized on Center Street, and it's a restriction to flows. My concern as a downstream neighbor, I agree with Mr. Woolworth, there should be a better solution to the flooding issues that are in this area, because we experience it during flashy events, and that's what some of the outcry that you heard from neighbors were the flooding complaints that are occurring. Those are existing conditions. You add more construction in the area, and we're worried about more stormwater entering a bloated watershed to begin with. So that's something, as Counselor Zandry said, you want to have the conversation about issues that are out there, that's one of them. It's not something that's your work, but you can assist us with going after hazard mitigation grants with FEMA. You can get a BRIC grant, a Building Resilient Communities grant, which I actually sit on the review committee that reviews those for FEMA. It's a fantastic program, and this would be a situation where you could demonstrate an activity such as improvements to existing culverts, et cetera, or some other sort of stormwater management approaches could address those issues, and it wouldn't be a Choate versus the neighborhood thing. The last thing was, is you brought up the sidewalk improvements, the flashing beacons on North Main Street. Those are some of the worst locations. If that was a state road, that's what's called a mid-block crossing, meaning you're crossing the road between two intersections. Now, if it was a state road, DOT would not allow this. I know this because when I was working in Simsbury, we were trying to improve some crosswalks on Route 10, and DOT said, no, you are to put the flashing beacons only at intersections. What it does is you're creating a sort of backup, a chain reaction, where you're backing drivers up with the pedestrians crossing prior to the intersection, but you have pedestrians at the intersection too. That's one of the things that came up during the planning and zoning process, is the traffic impacts. I don't know if these were, you know, fantastic Choate installed them. Were they reviewed and approved by the local traffic authority? Because if so, I question, why was mid-block crossings allowed in this location? It is not allowed or recommended by DOT, it should never have been installed. Those crossings are not appropriate in that location. So, thank you.
Maria Harlow, 6 Holly Lane. So first of all, Counselor Zandry, I get what you're doing. I love this exercise as an opportunity for community engagement. And reach out to the people that go to Facebook, that email call, trying to look for information and trying to provide their opinion about an issue. I remember you and I having those conversations early on when I started working at SCAU. That is very exciting to me, and I hope that something comes up from this, where we get the community interested in getting more informed and participate more. So when we have issues in our town, it's not only a couple of people here always giving feedback, you get more people in the community participating. So that is one. The second thing that I want to say is that Choate Rosemary Hall is part of the Wallingford family. We're all together, we are all part of this community. So I definitely would like to see less of them versus us, because at the end of the day, we are all Wallingford. Choate Rosemary Hall has been an incredible community partner, and I will speak on behalf of the nonprofits, and more particularly, well, I will speak on behalf of the nonprofits. They contribute endless, they make endless contributions, not only monetary, but in time volunteering, enhancing our services, community service, our educational opportunities, our cultural opportunities. It's very difficult to quantify their contributions to our town, but they are significant. And I think that is important that the community knows. Every time that an organization and institution supports a nonprofit, then that nonprofit can provide more services to the community. I wish we could do that quantification of what they do. And the last thing that I want to say, they are, everybody, everybody that you talk at Choate, there are people who are incredibly responsive, respectful, accommodating. There is always so much sincerity into all the interactions. So I'm sure that your experience reaching out to them, to Allison or to anyone that you reach out to Choate looking for information, people will receive it. And I think that that's what we need to understand about our relationship with Choate, is not that institution over there trying to take advantage of the community. On the contrary, it's our community and is serving our community as well. So thank you for, on behalf of all the nonprofits, to all the contributions that Choate has for our community.
Thank you. All right, I'll bring it back to the council. Counselor Allenson.
So Maria, you stole some of my thunder. So I did just want to make a comment and express, you know, my, some intangibles and tangibles that I have seen come out of this discussion and also that I've just observed in Choate in itself. So here are some of the ways that we, other ways that we can quantify Choate's relationship with the town of Wallingford. Appeal for having a school with their prestige and quality of education in the town does elevate the perception of Wallingford. Economic impacts to the town regarding student activities outside of the schools, i.e. eating out, shopping, et cetera. Beyond students, is how much is parent activity stimulating, to any great extent, the local economy, from eating in our restaurants on weekends and parent visiting times to purchasing real estate in town to be close to their students attending? Beyond those intangibles and the aforementioned contributions to local projects, as in crosswalks, sidewalks, buildings, et cetera, Choate is an amazing partner for local charitable organizations. I'm sure Ms. Katie could also detail that, because in great detail, how many dollars they contribute to local charities every year. And also in services, as an example, partnering with the Y when their pool was closed to allow. As an example, partnering with the Y when their pool was closed to allow the YMCA members to use the Cho pool. And then, you know, finally, we have a history on this council, at least as long as I have been a member, of talking about the visual appeal of the town. And Cho is impeccably maintained, even when they had a fire, which was caused by lightning, not any negligence on their part. The building impacted was restored more expeditiously than I think we could ever hope in any building in this town otherwise, including schools and our own town hall. So I really, I'm hearing all of the ideas about, you know, pilot programs or taxing, and I just, in my opinion, Cho provides so much of a great community partnership, and so many services to the town and economic developments to the town in other ways beyond what they're actually doing within their own campus, that I just, you know, I'll hear people out, but it would be a long leap for me to say that I would want to change their structure, because they are extremely helpful to us, and they do elevate the town of Wallingford, in my opinion. So, thank you very much.
Councilor Laffin.
Thank you. A lot of what Councilor Allenson said, and Councilor Zandry, thank you for the opening and introduction. Plus, without Cho, we wouldn't have twenty years of Harrison Ford rumors being in Wallingford.
Yes.
And what would we do without all those stories? It's easy to talk about the pilot programs, and that is certainly a conversation, I guess, that can be kicked around whether it's technically a pilot or not. And I think that came up because it is something tangible that we can discuss. That won't resolve what really kind of kickstarted all this, which is the more of the not-in-my-backyard frustration in that area. And that will always exist in the same way that it exists when we try and change a property to a parking lot, or sell off part of a park, or whatever. So I just want to put that out there and just be kind of blunt about that, that is not going to solve that problem. And that is kind of what I think really started this. There are so many organizations that people, you know, when they get their paycheck, they belong to an employment organization, that will collect a portion of their paycheck. And then when a coworker has a family member die, or somebody becomes sick, some coworkers will go around and collect money, let's try and buy them a meal. And I have experienced this, where then somebody says, no, that's what I pay that fee for. And that would be a very unfortunate attitude to embark towards. And I'm not saying it would happen within our generation or two, but when you start to quantify specific dollar amounts in too much detail, there would be, I think, a culture change or shift in our relationship with Cho that would take away from the cultural experiences, the volunteer work, the interactions with the students downtown. And those are all things that I think are working very well right now, and I'm not interested in challenging. So I just wanted to take, make my position clear, in case any of these discussions go forward. Thank you.
All right, I don't see any more hands on the council, and I think that's all we have for this issue.
I just wanted to, if I might, Mr. Chairman, just, I want to thank the indulgence of the chair for allowing this item. This really wasn't, it's not a normal item that we get to put on the council agenda. Usually, there's an action or an activity, but I thought it was important to, you know, take the opportunity, there was a lot of input from different residences, residents on this, and I wanted to have that opportunity made available. So I appreciate the residents that were able to come tonight and speak, the ones that wrote, the ones that called, the ones on Facebook, and I appreciate Cho coming out to, you know, tell their side of the story. I appreciate Allison, your office, and the emails and communications I got from you. I really do appreciate it. It made all the work that I was going to end up doing a lot, lot easier. I appreciate that as well. I think, I'd like to echo one quick sentiment from Councilor Laffin real quick. I think it's very important that we remember those mind-shift activities, right? And something he said made a lot of sense. Well, no, I don't want to put a dollar in a hat, because that's what I pay that fee for. And we get a lot of that in society. And I'll just use a simple example. I walk up South Main Street almost every single day, and invariably, I'll see one house taken care of better than another house. And often, when I stop, I talk to a homeowner, or, you know, they might ask me a question. And I'll ask them, I go, you know, are you having any issues with, you know, the brush from next door? I go, nah, the town will pick it up. That's what the town, that's what I pay my taxes for. Fifty years ago, you never would have heard that out of a resident's mouth. They would have picked up their own stuff. And I think what Councilor Laffin said is true. Once there's some sort of expectation that gets baked in, you lose the genuineness of spontaneous activity or that neighborly type activity. And I think that's important for us to remember. No solution here is going to be perfect. Mr. Glidden brought up the mid-street crosswalks. They were there before. They probably should have never been there, based on traffic rules, but rather than remove them, they just made them more safe by putting the crossing lights in. I definitely think the culvert issue with the water is something that does need to get addressed, and we should be investigating that. I think if there's a way for us to follow up on that item, we should, absolutely, before it gets worse. But I do appreciate the opportunity to have been able to brought this item up, and I thank everybody for their time and attention and their contributions to the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item will put us in executive session, so I'm going to ask you to clear the chambers. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
There is a motion. Councilor Fishman, did you want to be heard?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself from the matter that's presently before the body.
There's a motion to go into executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Just to be clear, the motion is to go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 1206B and 1225F regarding discussion of action to enforce a legal right with respect to a pending matter of the town of Wallingford and David Porto. That's the motion. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. I declare the council in executive session.
Call the meeting back to order. Can I get a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council back in public session. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution of the claim as discussed in executive session?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. There being no further business on this agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Or I'll just...
Just adjourn the meeting.
I'll just adjourn the meeting.